Good morning and welcome. My name is Paul Alpert. And I am the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. This is an open meeting of the Needham Planning Board. Today is Tuesday, April 12, and it is 10:34 in the morning. Special meeting. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda, and there are no hearings on the agenda. First, will we confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present? When I call your name, please respond that you are present. Gene McKnight.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
Marty Jacobs.
Present.
Natasha Espada.
Present.
We are all five members of the planning board are present. Next, I'll introduce the planning department staff, our planning director Lee Newman.
Present.
And our assistant planning director Alexandra Clea.
Present.
Thank you. As each agenda item is reached, I will introduce participants who are here to present or discuss projects and proposals. For those participating in the meeting, please also be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov, unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. Each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. So, the first item on our agenda is to discuss the decision with regard to the amendment to major project site plan special permit number 2005-07. Carbon Health Medical Group of Florida is the petitioner. I take that back. The petitioner is Needham Gateway LLC, together with Carbon Health Medical Group of Florida. They are co-petitioners for the property located at 10120 Highland Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts, regarding request for new principal use in the subject property described as a medical professional office, providing primary and walk-in medical care. We have received a draft decision. We then received an extensively redlined copy of that decision redlined by the attorney for the petitioners, Rick Mann. And I reviewed the redlined version. And most of my comments and changes go to the changes that are suggested by Mr. Mann. I had a few changes to the original, but that's what I'm working out of. And so my question is, let's see if Mr. Mann is here, is whether we should... Yes, he is here. Whether we should bring Mr. Mann over now? Because a lot of my comments are regarding his changes, or whether we should discuss this without him being present as a participant. I see that Mike Moskowitz is also here as his doctor. Oh, I'll mispronounce his name, but I'll give it a try. Olufedegi. My inclination is to bring Mr. Mann over. Mr. Moskowitz does not, or Dr. Olufedegi does not have to be part of the discussion, but Lee, I'd like to ask you if that's proper procedure.
Yes, that would be fine.
Okay, so Alex, if you would bring Rick Mann over? And we'll bring the others over if Rick requests it and we feel that it's necessary. Hi, Rick. How are you?
Good, Paul. How are you?
I'm good. So let me ask the board members, have you all had a chance to review the decision and have you had a chance to review the redlined decision?
I have done both.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Adam? Okay, Marty said also. Okay, great. So if I may, I would like to go through the decision based on the redlined version, and I'll go through it in order. So if other board members have comments, why don't you interrupt me so that we can just go through the whole thing in order rather than my making my suggestions and then each board member going in, let's do it page by page. So my first comment, Rick, you had put into the second paragraph the phrase, "Finding the Carbon Health's proposed uses categorized under the bylaw as a professional office and confirming that such use is allowed in the shopping center is a matter of right." I felt that that didn't need to be there because it was covered in the third paragraph of the first page. The requested major project site plan review special permit amendment would, if granted, allow a principal use described as a medical professional office providing primary and walk-in medical care, which use is allowed as a matter of right.
I don't have strong feelings about it, Paul, but the reason that I made... I'm sorry, did you want to add something, Gene?
Yes, I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Alpert that this additional wording is not necessary. Also, I'd like to be reminded of where we are in the process. Did we vote to grant the relief and to approve a draft decision? We haven't done that yet.
I think all we did was close the hearing.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that reminder. I was going to say, well, this isn't the way we voted it, but since we haven't voted it yet, that's not my objection. My objection is the same as yours, that this...
I have no problem, Paul. Okay, I think technically because the second paragraph speaks about what is being requested, it is probably appropriate, but it's not worth my arguing about. Happy to take it out.
Okay. Okay, Lee, so we'll take out the suggested language in the second paragraph on page one. I had no other comments to page one. Gene?
Mr. Shep, may I go back to the first paragraph?
Okay.
The phrase "shopping center" is used later in the redlined version, but it's not defined. And I thought adding parenthesis, the quote "shopping center" unquote into parenthesis at the very end of the first paragraph would be the place to define that phrase.
I agree.
Why don't we do it?
Any other comments to page one? Okay. So on page two, Lee, Rick Mann points out that exhibit number five and exhibit number nine seem to revert to the same thing.
That he's correct. That's a mistake. I'll fix it.
Okay. Which may mean, I don't know whether you need to do some renumbering later in the agreement, but...
I may, and if I do, I will.
Okay. That's all I've got on page two. Is there anything else on page two? Okay. On page three, I had no problem with the one change that Mr. Mann made to section 1.1. In section 1.2, Lee, the first line, the decision issued by the Needham Planning, you have to insert the word "board."
Okay. Oh. Board, but I'll say the board because I defined that term earlier, I think.
Okay, fine.
Excuse me. I note that in paragraph numbered 1.2, I hadn't seen this before, that there is, shopping center is defined right here. So it needn't be defined in the first paragraph.
Okay.
Shall I, so I'll cross out my comment for the first paragraph since I know...
Marty, you had a comment about it that you agreed with Gene. Do you think it should be at the beginning of page one or here, or it doesn't matter?
I prefer it at the beginning of page one, but you know, it's not a big deal.
Well, given that it's your last meeting, we're going to defer to you.
All right, then, well, there's no need to to have the...
Right, so we'll take it out here and we'll put it, we'll move that phrase to the end of the first paragraph on page one.
Yes, okay, with whatever rewording is needed to fit it in.
Yeah, what's up?
That middle of the going away party that we had planned or...
Rick, you weren't invited.
I'm so surprised, Jim.
Okay, any other comments on page three? Yes, Adam. Adam, you're muted.
At section 1.5, where we talk about a total of eight staff, medical and non-medical.
Yeah.
Should we... I have a couple of comments here. One, should we also note here, as we do in the condition section later, including not more than two of a physician, physician's assistant and/or nurse at any one time?
Adam, are you talking about 1.5?
Yes.
Yes, that's the same question I had. It says two licensed physicians.
Yeah, it does say, Adam, including no more than two licensed physicians.
But can we add that it's not just physicians? If the physicians aren't there, there are other people that are taking care, so we don't want the whole place filled with other people.
Yes, that's a good point, right?
Well, then I can move what we had in the condition section under section 3.9, which is that no more than two of any combination of physician, well, I think as Rick had rewritten it, physician, physician's assistants or nurse practitioner shall be present on the premises at any one time for purposes of administering medical treatment. Basically, mirror the language in 3.9 and move it over to the findings.
Yeah, so it's a copy and paste. It's not removing it from the condition.
Yeah, that's right.
And then, and then the hours of... This comes up both here and elsewhere, but it says nine to seven, and I think elsewhere as a condition, Rick, you modified the hours.
Yeah.
I missed that, Adam, but yeah, I did change that to eight to eight. That's what our application actually provided as well.
That's what the application provided, but that's not what was said at the hearing, which is why I changed it, but I'm fine to live with whatever the board feels is appropriate.
Do I have any... Whatever it is, it should be consistent. I agree with Adam.
Yes, since it says expected to be, you know, it'd be confusing to have different hours, I think, here.
Just, Rick...
So how does the board, well, how does the board feel about the hours being eight to eight? Which is an hour earlier in the morning and an hour later at night?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I don't either.
I don't either.
People are generally awake.
Okay.
Those hours.
Panera Bread's been open for a couple of hours, probably at that point.
I did have a question, Rick. And I don't mean to open up any kind of a Pandora's box by this, and yet I am curious what other businesses over the last two years, for instance, have have been open prior to 9:00 AM and have been open after 7:00 PM? Is it just Panera Bread at that location?
I wouldn't know the answer. Mike? And Mike's not on the... I don't know. But at least, as you just said, at least Panera Bread has been, and that's a significant user.
Sure, probably the most of all of the retail users.
Without a question. Without a question.
And I think that, I think that what we saw from the traffic, from the traffic report, it's a reducing, it's a reducing factor of traffic.
They have it open longer.
Yeah, in other words, that it's a reduction of, it's a reduction of parking and traffic demand. You know, in those hours. So I'm on that basis, I'm fine with it.
Okay, then, and we'll change that to 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM at 1.5.
Eight to eight.
Eight to eight. I'm sorry, eight to eight. Anything else on page three, Gene?
Yes, in section 1.4, in the fourth line, after it speaks of, the proposal consists of leasing approximately 3,275 gross square foot floor area. The capital, the term premises is used throughout the document, but it's never defined. It's not capitalized either, but since it continues to be used throughout the document as distinguishing it from the shopping center as a whole, I thought it should be defined, and this would be a good place to do it right there. The premises with a capital P, and then, you know, then staff would look through the document and for the word premises and capitalize it where you...
Okay, I'm looking at paragraph 1.4. Why am I not seeing the word premises? I'm just not seeing it. So where...
1.4? No. It is not there. I'm suggesting it be added.
Oh, okay.
After, after 120 Highland Avenue, I think that would probably be the appropriate place.
Right.
Parentheses, the premises, capital P.
Correct.
And then you just do a word search for lowercase premises and change that to capital P premises.
Okay, yeah, I had said after 3, 275 square feet, but I agree that after, in the building at 120 Highland Avenue is the better place.
I agree with that.
Yep.
All right, and then I'll just search for it. Okay.
Okay, I'm on to page four, and I have a lot of things here. To begin with, section 1.7, Rick added the phrase, it said, "No changes are proposed to the parking area." And Rick added the phrase, "From any previously approved changes," and I just was questioning why that's there, why that's necessary, because we're referencing all of the prior amendments as being...
Not necessary, Paul.
Okay. Then why don't we, why don't we take that out? Um, in 1.9, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th line down, you have 43.33 seats. I think that should be spaces. 130 seats divided by 3 equals 43.33 spaces plus 20 spaces for two takeout sections equals 63.33 spaces.
Um, Paul, I think the reference is to, is actually to seats in the restaurant. 130 seats divided by 3.
Yeah, but that's, we're getting, we're getting the number of parking spaces that are required based on the number of seats in the restaurant.
That's right.
But isn't the way it's worded right now? No, oh, I'm sorry. Equals...
130 seats is correct.
But...
Right, 130 seats is correct, but it's 43 spaces.
Right.
Yes. And then, so then, as you said, it's plus 20 spaces.
Spaces for the two takeout stations.
Right.
And it's 10 spaces per takeout station.
Paul's correct.
Yeah.
It's my mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then two lines below that, you've got the number 3,275. You should have square feet after that number. And then below that, 4,0747, you should have square feet after that number.
Okay.
And then at the bottom of the paragraph, Rick, this is something that's going to be recurring. I want to take out the language about, I want to take out the last sentence. 1, 2, 3, 4, it begins five lines up from the bottom, and in the event that the proposed future use of the building at 100 Island Avenue exceeds, I want to take that out. I think our discussion was, and if it wasn't our discussion, it's my feeling now, you're going to have to come back to us when you've got a tenant for Frank Webb. Because the parking proposal that you gave us was very tight at the noon hour. At the maximum hour, you had, I think, 87 out of the 96 spaces, and we talked about the fact that whatever goes into Frank Webb, we're going to have to look at the parking situation. And you have drafted language that says to me that you're, you've, you're creating an out of, under certain circumstances, not having to come back to discuss the parking. If there's a an as-of right use going into the Frank Webb building, and your parking guy tells you your parking's okay, and you're going to say, well, then we don't have to run it by the planning board. You're going to have to run it by the planning board.
Well, then more in that section has to be changed, because what I did when I drafted this was I basically only granted a parking waiver for the building where Carbon Health is going, and I took the parking waiver off the table for the Webb building, which meant that any use...
Okay.
So that any use that went into the Webb building triggered a parking requirement, a parking waiver, and this basically, I mean, even the language that comes before this qualifying sentence that you're identifying gets rid of, you know, basically grants, puts that waiver back in place. So if you want to eliminate the park, if you want to have that building come back in front of you, then you need to get rid of the parking waiver that's been granted for it.
I respectfully disagree with that, and I think it's inappropriate to be eliminating entirely the waiver that was granted back in 2006. I think you can either do, it seems to me, one of two things, you can either not agree to add an additional six spaces as to the waiver, because that is the additional parking requirement for the Carbon Health use versus the prior use. And then it eats in, if you will, to the previously granted waiver. Or you can grant it, in which case we continue to have the same number of spaces available. I don't, I don't see any logic behind eliminating the entire waiver that was granted back in 2006. It's just, it isn't right. I'm not trying to get out from coming back to the bullet call. That wasn't the intention of that section. If, to the extent that we exceed whatever is left in the waiver, we absolutely have to come back to you, and I cannot conceive a scenario where we're not going to have to come back to you. Unless, but let me be clear and candid. I mean, let's just assume we subdivide the Webb building, as we have every right to do. And instead of 1,000,600 whatever square foot tenant, we have, you know, 3,000 and change. And they may come in a progression over time. We should not be held up, excuse me. Let's say the first 3,000 square feet comes in, there's plenty of room in the waiver for that. When we get towards the latter two, it may be a problem. And then, of course, we would have to come back to you. That's what I meant by my language. Again, not trying to get out for under, I really, again, I cannot conceive of a scenario where ultimately we're not going to have to come back to you. Ultimately.
Hey, can I ask a question more specifically? What is meant by the language, "The board reserves the right to review the future proposed use, including an updated parking study, to determine whether the need for such additional parking spaces should be waived." Paul, what's your reading of that?
I thought that was a concession, by the way, Adam, to what Paul was saying.
Which was effectively that you're acknowledging that you have to come back in front of us.
Yeah, that's what I thought was saying. That's what I'm a little confused by.
The sentence starts with, "In the event that the proposed future use of the building exceeds the number of spaces required by the form of use by Frank Webb." And that's what I wanted to come out.
I hear you on that. I understand your point on that. Perhaps it should have said any of the additional waived spaces or something to that effect.
I think that what that, what that does, but Rick, I think what that does is because the waiver has basically, the way this is drafted, as I understand it, the waiver that was granted for the Frank Webb building for the retail use, so that building, the Frank Webb building could be used for retail use, any use that's going to require one parking space for every 300 square feet of area, that's embedded into this. I took that out. So as I, that's how I interpret this, that basically what you're, what the board has done under this draft is to say that the building at 120 can be utilized with a parking waiver, and the Frank Webb building can be used for a use that requires one parking space for every 300 square feet, which is basically a professional office. It's a retail use. It's a consumer service. So that building can be utilized without coming back at all. So this basically puts that waiver in there and says that...
The waiver should be, I'm sorry.
But, I mean, that's how I interpret the change that's been made here.
Yeah, the waiver should, is, remains in effect. We're not giving up a waiver.
I think, I think that that was the issue that you and I talked about, was that the parking study that got submitted did not document the fact that with the Frank Webb building at that location and the Carbon Health use in their building, that there was sufficient parking on the site to accommodate that use. The parking study wasn't done appropriately. And that the way to rectify it was to basically get rid of that waiver, and when you have a tenant for that building, come in with an updated study and re-ask for the waiver.
The reality is, we're going to have to come in with an updated study in order to convince you that everything is copacetic. There's no question in my mind that that's going to happen.
But how does that happen if that building has a waiver for... I don't understand how that happens.
Lee, if I may, it doesn't, doesn't the parking waiver go to the entire shopping center? And not to the two buildings individually?
Yes.
The way I drafted it was that the parking waiver that ended up being granted was only sufficient to allow a use to happen in the building where Carbon Health was. And that it wasn't sufficient to allow now, to allow the Webb building to be activated. And so that any use that happened in the Webb building had to come back in front of you, whether it was retail or consumer service, whatever, and you needed to have a parking study submitted in order to open up that use again. And the reason I did that was because the parking study that was submitted with the Carbon Health application didn't document that the Webb building, you know, occupied in a retail use worked with the conversion that was happening over at Carbon Health.
The worst-case scenario. I'm sorry, Gene?
I have a small suggestion that I, and when I did this review, I stuck this in, and I wonder if just inserting this would solve the problem. With a large block of redlining begins about in the middle of the paragraph where it says, "The parking requirement," as redlined, it says, "The parking requirement for..." Wait a minute. According to pursuant to the zoning bylaw, the parking requirement for the current and proposed uses. Then it says, "In the shopping center." And I thought if we change that to, "The parking requirement for the current and proposed uses at 120 Highland Avenue is 97 spaces, and only 96 spaces are provided." That's simply a statement of fact. Then we leave in the last sentence as Mr. Mann drafted it. However, I would change the word "should," additional parking spaces should be waived, to "may be waived," because of course it's discretionary. the word "should," parking, additional parking spaces should be waived, to "may be waived," because of course it's discretionary on our part. I would make those two changes, and I think it does everything.
But now, Jean, you're bifurcating the parking requirement between the, between the two buildings. And I'm not sure we want to do that. We have, and I haven't read the prior decisions, but it sounds to me like we presently have a special permit that allows ninety-six parking spaces for the entire shopping center. And so we need to deal with the parking spaces for the entire shopping center. And right now, we have, we have waived the total number of spaces so that there are ninety-six spaces. Now, is
If I may, we did that on the basis of the sentence that I was just referring to, that, that this is the number of spaces that are sufficient to serve one twenty. I mean, one twenty Highland Avenue.
No.
That, that test isn't true, and that isn't the way this, this should be reviewed. This, this shopping center was granted a, a waiver based on an assumed number of uses, which were essentially a forty-eight-hundred-square-foot restaurant in one of the buildings, and a balance in retail. That has morphed over time, obviously, and then expanded. But the basic waiver has remained in effect. That's a thirty-space waiver. We should not be asked to be giving that up. If you want to, in effect, eat six of those spaces up because of the differential between what was the use of these three areas that are now being taken up by Carbon Health, that's understandable. But there's still going to be some leftover. It isn't going to be enough to cover a hundred percent in a worst-case scenario of the web building. And we are going to have to come back to you. But I, I don't, I think it's, I think we're I think we're going down a path that, that just isn't right.
So is Rick correctly that under the current special permit, there's a waiver of thirty spaces to bring it down to ninety-seven? That it was, it was determined that a hundred and twenty-seven spaces were required, and so we issued a waiver for ninety-seven, which we then issued a further waiver in March down to ninety-six?
Rick is correct about that, yes.
Okay, so we're fine with, so I'm fine with that. So now Rick is saying we need an additional waiver for six additional spaces because by changing the use of the, what we're now calling the premises with a capital P,
Right.
That now requires an additional six spaces, so we're up to a hundred and thirty-three spaces required by our math, by our zoning bylaw math. And therefore, we need a waiver for an additional six spaces. That, that sounds right to me. So that's why, that's why I'm saying all of the language that Rick added down to where I'm starting with, "in the event the proposed future use." All that sounds correct to me that we have to issue an additional waiver for six additional spaces.
That's correct. I think the issue that you have is that I thought there was a concern with the web building being used even for its permitted use. Because the park, because the parking study didn't document that.
Correct.
And so if you grant a waiver now, as I understand it, for Carbon Health, on top of the existing waiver, you have embedded, you have basically allowed the web building to be utilized at one parking space for three hundred square feet for either retail or consumer use without re-examining it.
So what we want to add in lieu of Rick's last sentence is to just say "in the event of a proposed future use of the building at one hundred Highland Avenue, comma, the proposed future use, comma, including an updated parking study, comma, now, I lost, I lost it being a sentence.
I, I think
"in the event of a proposed future use at one hundred Highland Avenue." The number of spaces required. No. "In the event of a proposed future use of the building at one hundred Highland Avenue, the board reserves the right to review the future proposed use, including an updated parking study, to determine what, whether the need for additional parking spaces should be waived." How does that sound?
Well, you've already granted the waiver. If the waiver is embedded in what you, what, what hap, you've already granted the waiver, that's all I'm saying, is, is the language that comes before it grants the waiver.
It grants the waiver. It, it recognizes the differential between the carbon health use and what was there before. That, that is true. I, I have a suggestion that maybe resolves your concern. Again, if, if you, if you start with the premise that we have a thirty space, maybe thirty-one with the additional one that we waived the other day, waiver. And we're now eating into that waiver arguably by six spaces, but we're not anticipated because they're not, because Carbon Health is not a retail use. Then why not say, "To the extent the new use exceeds twenty-four spaces, thirty minus six, or thirty-one, I can't, I can't get straight in my head whether it's now thirty-one now, because we went to ninety-six, but I think it is thirty-one minus six. So if it exceeds twenty-five spaces, then we've got to come back to you." Does that make sense? I, I think it, I think it covers your concern.
I, I want to make, I want to make a distinction. It's it's, there is potential, though, that, that, as we've seen with other parking studies, that some parking engineers don't necessarily get it right. So the way that you've just framed it, which might have been intentional, I, I is
Give me far too much credit, Adam.
Is, but the way, the other way, the, the way that you've, the way that you've framed it is I think kind of goes back to what Paul's original concern is, which is a concern that the whole of the board has. In other words, under any circumstance, any, any new lease that Mike is about to sign for the property will require you, you to make a presentation, amend the special permit further, and at that time, we'll have to address the impact on the parking, whatever the, the use is, regardless.
Only concern arises, Rick, Rick, please. The concern arises because the parking study showed that at the peak hour there was a possibility of eighty-seven parking spaces being filled during, during the peak hours. Which leaves only nine spaces empty. And if, and if Frank Webb goes in there and they're required, you're saying if they only require twenty-four spaces, they're covered by the waiver, but we, but at peak hours, according to your parking study, we don't have twenty-four spaces.
That's correct.
Yeah, but, 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 wait, wait.
Because eighty-seven spaces could very well be in use, according to your parking study. And that's a problem.
Remember, you're assuming that all those spaces are being utilized during that one peak hour.
That's why we need a new, that's why we needed a new parking study at that time. Because then the engineers come in and say, "Okay, we're finding that they're only using, even at the peak hours, they're only using seventy-five spaces." Well, that's fine.
I understand your point. I, I have a couple of responses, though. One is, one is quite frankly, that any retailer is going to be looking at the situation and the parking probably more so than the members of the board, or, or, or Mike, or, or me, or even the engineer, because they're not going to want to be in a, in a center where they're not going to have the ability to have their customers park. So they're going to look at Panera, and they're going to look at that peak period, and they're going to say, "Well, wait a minute, we have a peak period of the same. That's not going to work for us." That's just a practical matter, and I understand that you don't want to rely on the marketplace. That's not necessarily a job, although I thought, frankly, the intriguing comments made by that gentleman last, at the last meeting were, were, were very thought-provoking, quite, quite candidly, and, and he's right, you know, it, it just, it isn't, if it isn't going to work, no sophisticated retailer is going to go in there anyway during that.
I just want to pause, I want to pause here for one second because I'm mindful of the time. It's eleven fifteen. We only have Marty for five more minutes. And, and I wasn't sure if we need or want his, you know, guidance and comments or questions about our executive session that's coming. And if so, if we should, you know, if we should adjourn here and then make a motion to go to executive session and then return back here when we complete that and continue the rest of our agenda. I'm just, I'm, Marty, I'm not asking what they are, but do you have any comments, guidance, or questions for us about the executive session?
It depends.
So then, I wonder then if we should, if we should make a motion to adjourn for a half an hour this meeting, and then take up the executive session, because we only have five minutes.
Adam, I'm not available after eleven-thirty, just to let you know, because I only have a mic on at ten-thirty to eleven-thirty.
Natasha's not going to be available, and Marty's not going to be available. So we're not going to have four votes to approve the requested to, to approve the, the So I think we have to vote the requested relief.
I'll be right back when my meeting is over. Okay?
So my question is, Jean, can we approve the requested relief and then approve the decision at a later time?
Not with, well, not with Marty voting. Marty's out of it.
He can, can he vote for the requested relief but not be available to vote on the, on the decision? Because we'll have four votes if Natasha's there.
I would, I would think it wouldn't be relevant if Marty doesn't sign the decision as long as the other four do. Wouldn't that be right, Lee?
Yeah, but
Yes, but I think, I, I think, I think it would be cleaner if just the four that are going to sign the decision voted it. And Marty was just
And Natasha has to leave at eleven-thirty. Can we defer the whole thing? Because I've got another Zoom meeting at one o'clock that I need to prepare for.
Can we, I like, can we vote it, like you just said, and then at least get, hopefully, we have four, and then we can wordsmith the decision.
Yeah, let's, let's vote it while I'm here. I don't think you need me for the executive session, do you?
No, I don't think we do.
Okay.
Do you feel that you need to be at the executive session?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, so
I would, I would, I think it's, we should go ahead and vote this relief and then wordsmith it.
Without me. So in the paragraph on page six that has the relief, I wanted to take out the language that Rick put in.
Are you referring to the decision?
Yes.
Yes, the board voted five to nothing to grant. Because I think that that's not, we're not really granting the the relief that that it's a professional office by granting, by granting the amendment and with all the conditions that discuss it being a professional office. I think that's inherent in the grant of number one.
I don't have any strong feelings against that. I don't have any strong feelings against that, Mr. Chair. I, I, I think though, you know, technically, in the earlier part of the decision, it said that that was what we were asking. And so it seemed logical that it would be part of the decision, but I do believe you're right that it's assumed in the, in the decision.
Right. So therefore, can I have a motion to grant the relief as worded in the middle of page six without the redlined language?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any, any, any discussion on that? Seeing none, we'll take, we'll take the vote. Adam Block.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Jean, you're muted.
Jean, you're muted.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
Natasha Spada.
Aye.
And, and the chair votes aye. It is five to nothing. And
So how does this proceed then? We go back and review the actual conditions afterwards?
We, 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 we're going to have to finish our discussion on the decision at our next meeting.
Okay.
And so we're continuing this matter.
We really, we really have to stop meeting like this, Mr. Chair.
I just want to be totally clear on process. My understanding is Natasha is not at the next meeting. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Next week's meeting? Yeah, because that's school vacation.
School vacation week. Yep, she's been clear about that, so I've had it on my radar.
Well, which, which means then that we're going to have to have a special meeting, because now that you voted it, well, you've got fourteen days to record it with the clerk. So we'll have to work that out.
Okay, we'll schedule a special meeting for when Natasha can be there.
Thank you, well done. Thank you.
Folks, I have to go.
And Marty.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Hi, Marty.
So can we say how much we love you?
Of course. Of course you can say.
What a pleasure it has been working with you for fifteen years. Oh, your, your thoughtfulness, your insights. We will miss you so much.
So the other matters that are on our agenda are not going to be discussed today. May I have a motion to go into executive session and
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Chair, could I just get one quick vote, which is the, the vote to, you know, I received the filing on the Muzzy property. We have a special permit, and we have a proposal from GPI to do the peer review. So I would like this board to make a finding that a traffic peer review is required as a function of that project, and to request that the developer provide the town with a thirty thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and some change that's in GPI's proposal, so that I can move forward with the contract with GPI.
Just before I make a motion on that, I, when I looked at it, it looked like the total amount was thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty. So should we make?
I thought, I thought, did I?
Sorry, I got to go.
Yeah, you're, you're out, Marty.
Aye, Marty.
Bye-bye. We'll talk to you later.
We'll talk.
Okay, Adam, let me just get to the page. I'm sorry, I, I wrote down, I wrote that down, that number down from my notes and
The bottom line, the bottom line on the April fifth letter from GPI is thirty thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-four cents.
But the spreadsheet showed a total fee of thirty-four thousand, six fifty-one.
Um, okay, why don't you vote the thirty-fourth, the total fee, the thirty-four, six fifty, and I'll get a correction from John.
I'm, I move that we, that we require, that we, what, Lee, that we require, I, I move that the planning board recognizes the need for peer review for the traffic impacts, including parking associated with the property at five fifty-seven Highland Avenue, and that we further require the developer to, to finance that peer review, which we understand is currently in the amount of thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars.
We want to change that to say, "which shall, which shall not exceed."
Yeah, "which shall not exceed," and then I can clarify the amount with John.
Exceed.
But what if, but if, I mean, I expect we're going to have
It, if GPI comes back to us, it requires a further vote.
Okay, so
We did that at sixteen eighty-eight. It gives the developer an opportunity to, to say, you know, it's too much money.
So moved.
Okay, we'll have a second.
Second.
Okay, Jean seconded. Any further discussion? Sounds good to me. The whole, the whole letter looked fine to me. Sounds good to me. The whole, the whole letter looked fine to me. Um, hearing no further discussion, Adam Block.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That's passed four, four to nothing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that the planning board vote to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to legislation. With respect to litigation, uh, in the matter of Needham Enterprises LLC versus the Town of Needham Planning Board. Because the chair declares that such discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the board's litigation, litigating position. And to allow, um, uh, uh, Lee and Alex. As non-members participating to participate in the discussion. And to adjourn at the conclusion of the executive session without returning to open session.
Second.
I have a second. Uh, any further discussion?
Yes, Lee, do we have a separate login for that?
Yes, Alex, I believe Alex sent you the link.
And.
Yes, I sent a calendar invite with the link to that meeting. Um, if you don't have it, let me know.
And I presume that Jay is, uh, um, is going to participate?
Correct. And he has that link as well.
Yes.
Did you send that this morning or yesterday or when?
Um, I'm not, I honestly don't, I think it was yesterday.
Okay.
I can send it again. It was in a calendar invite, though.
Should we state for the record at this point, since we're still in open meeting? Who of the planning board will be at that executive session and who will not be there?
So specifically, uh, Natasha, since she was recused. Uh, during the hearing, uh, related to the matter at sixteen eighty eight Central Avenue. Um, uh, while she has been named as a, a member of the planning board. In the applicant's appeal of our decision. Uh, uh, that both the applicant's attorney and the town attorney on this matter. Have agreed to remove Natasha from the, uh, from the legal proceeding. And therefore, uh, it will only be at the, it, the planning board, the only planning board members attending. Executive session shall be myself, Jean, and Paul.
Right, and Marty, and Marty, and Marty Jacobs will not be there because he had a prior. A prior.
And I did, I did, the, the calendar thing sprung up for me, so I hope it did for everyone.
So that is, so we've had a discussion, so now it's time to take a vote. Am I, the last point of the discussion. Is can Lee, you or Alex, please email Jay and let him know that we're going to convene that executive session now?
I've been in touch with him, he knows.
Great, thank you very kindly.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so on the vote, which, uh, was made by Adam and seconded by Jean. Um, Adam Block.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Natasha Espada.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. It's passed. This meeting will be adjourned after the executive session. And so the open meeting is adjourned, and I'll see you all in executive session, except for Natasha. Natasha, have a great day.